Everybody, we're going to get started, so we'd like to invite everybody to please take a seat and for the candidates to come up front and take their place. Earlier, we drew names out of a hat to determine the order that we will start answering questions, so they're going to sit in that order. We would like to thank the senior center for allowing us to use this facility. And like I said, we're from the Chamber of Commerce, so my name's Christina, this is Josh. We run the Chamber of Commerce here in American Fork. We are a neutral party, and so we thought it would be great for us to be able to host the debates. We wanted to point out, none of the questions came from us, and they were all just submitted by the audience. So if you haven't had a chance to submit a question yet, we're going to put taking questions pretty shortly, so if you want to go back and fill one of those out, then we'll kind of sorting them right now, and then we'll ask the question. So I want to invite Kevin Barnes to come up. He's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, I'm just gonna go a little bit over the format of what we're going to do tonight. So we are going to ask the audience to please refrain from yelling out questions. It just gets really chaotic and confusing that way. And from applauding after each candidate gives their answer, we will allow you at the end to applaud to thank all of them for coming, but please try to keep that to a minimum because we are, you know, kind of pressed for time. We want to get in as many questions as we can. So we're going to start with a two-minute opening statement from each candidate, and we'll start with Tim, and then Ernie, Ken, Jeff, and Clark. I wanted to point out also that, yes, six candidates did make it through the primary. We did have one drop out, so that is why we have five participating tonight. We're not missing anybody. Then after the two-minute opening statement, we'll start with the questions, and each candidate will have 60 seconds to answer that question, and we'll let everybody have a chance to answer it. And then at the end, if anybody wants to offer a rebuttal, then everybody has a chance to offer a 30-second rebuttal. Just keeps it fair and easy. And then at the end, we will have 90 seconds for each of you to give a closing statement. So kind of in your opening statement, we just want you to talk about why you're running, and introduce yourself, and why people should vote for you. So I'm gonna give actually this over to Josh. Oh, you were on a timer too, so you do have the two minutes for your opening statement, 60 seconds to answer the question, and Rachel will make sure that you stick to that. So. Start with opening statements? Do you want me to?
I do.
Josh didn't want to say anything, so start with Tim.
All right, good evening, everybody. I am Tim Holly, and I'm very excited to be here this evening. And I think that we all know that this is a really important event that's going on in the next couple of weeks, next month or so, this election that's coming up. Elections at the local level are extremely critical to our way of life, to the quality of life. And so I know that you all understand the importance of coming here to be involved, and I also understand the responsibility that comes with even participating in this campaign and running for city council. So a little bit about me, I'm a Marine, I'm a small business owner, I'm also involved in IT sales, so I stay pretty busy. But the reason I even mention that is because I have a variety of experience where I've been involved with strategic planning in the Ukraine war, most recently on the intelligence side. I started a brick-and-mortar small business and was able to manage it through the COVID pandemic. My partners and I, we managed it through, and everything was going against us, and we still pushed through. And then also, on the, my primary job is in IT sales, that I've worked with a wide variety of clients across the US and really around the world, helping them to solve critical problems. I'm also a husband, I'm a father-to-be on the way, I'm about to be a boy dad, so I'm very excited about that. And, you know, I just really love living in this city. This is some place that my wife and I, we wanted to put down roots, we wanted to start our family. And American Fork is an amazing place to live, but with that, we need to make sure that we have good men and women who are responsible for everything that goes along with our city, that are running our city, and that are leading our city. So this is kind of my encouragement over the next hour or so, is what you want to be looking for, and what I'm also looking for in people on the city council. We want people who want to work hard, we want people who want to act civil toward each other, who can engage professionally, especially people they don't agree with. We want people who can compromise and are willing to work together, even on solutions that they didn't come up with. And we want people who are leaders, and we want people who are problem solvers and optimistic about solving problems. So, thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Ernie John. I guess you can tell that. The reason I'm running, this is pretty easy, I guess 20 years ago when we moved back to American Fork. I got on the water board, I asked a question about if I could help, and I've got the name of Jay Chatfield, our previous mayor, took me under his wing, and I'm still not sure why today. And he basically prepared me for this. I've been sitting on several boards for the last 20 years. I'm current president of American Fork area, so I've been a board member for 20 years. I'm president and chairman of American Fork water district, I'm board member for North East Canyon Water Conservancy District. You know, that's all water. So the good news is, 100 days a year, I get to spend in American Fork Canyon. That's my watershed, I manage that. So it's a pretty tough office. I'm like Tim, there's, this is really important. We really, as a city council member, we really have to be able to dive deep into issues that the average citizen doesn't have time for. Or if they do, we need to be able to spend the time with them to listen to their concerns. But we're gonna spend a lot of time on issues, and we need to be able to hold our hand up and say, this is why we did it. And we may be disagree with the residents sometimes, and maybe each other. I'm like Tim, I can agree to disagree, and there's no justification. In fact, I enjoy the debate because I'm a good listener, but by the same token, I'm hoping that everybody I get to work with will listen to me also. So my wife and I have lived in 11 states since we got married, almost 40 years now. We have kids born on both coasts, and I'll tell you, I've seen good local government, had really, really bad local government. We moved to Indiana with a great raise, and I actually took a cut in pay because the taxes were so high. Every single high school in Indiana has an Olympic swim pool, at least one, maybe two. I don't want that to happen, and I'm really frugal, so look forward to talking to you more tonight. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ken Suncion. A little bit about me, I am CPA accountant. I work for BYU, I manage their, currently the last four years, I managed their financial systems and dining services. Worked previous to that for about 20 years as an internal consultant implementing their financial systems. I started my career, got my masters at BYU, moved to California, worked for Arthur Andersen as CPA, moved to Alabama as internal auditor of a multi-billion dollar company. 10 months later, they moved me to North Carolina where I was a fiscal analyst and helped purchase companies for this big company, so they bought little companies. 10 years ago, I served in the state legislature, I did that for six years, and I really thought that I was done running for public office because, as these gentlemen have alluded to, it is a lot of work to run for office, and it's a tremendous amount of work while you're in office, to do all the things that you need to learn and understand. But a couple of issues which we will discuss here this evening is our tax increase last, our property tax increase last year, the fiber project, how our $30 million road bond was passed as an RBA rather than coming to vote to the citizens. Those issues to me are important enough that they're worth my time of spending, I'm coming up with about $3,000, I've spent hundreds of hours, got plenty more time to go knocking doors, probably steadily receiving emails. So that's why I'm here. I feel like someone has to be the messenger to say, hey, should we be doing all of these projects, or should we not? And I'm obviously in the position that we shouldn't be doing some of these projects and/or reevaluate how we approach some of the others that we'll talk about tonight, but thank you for being here.
It's good to be here. It's interesting, last time I ran for city council, about 2014 to 2017, and when I got in there, one of my neighbors said, you were a lot nicer before you got on the city council. I hope I'm the same person on or off the city council, but anyway, I'm a Marine, I've been working, I've been living in American Fork since 2000, or 1996. I've been practicing law for about 34 years. I've been married 46 years, got 17 grandchildren. I love American Fork City. I didn't think that when I grew up in Orem, I thought, American Fork, that's the town that's where they're all the cowboy people live, American Fork. Now, it used to be Lehigh, now Lehigh's moved down, I don't know where, how far the cowboys moved out this way, because Lehigh now is a booming metropolis. But anyway, I've never enjoyed running for office as much as I have this year, because I've been going door to door, and I appreciate the niceness. I have, I've had nobody throw anything at me or be mean to me, and it's a pleasure to get out and walk among, just walk on the streets. And I look at the sidewalks, I look at the roadways, I look at the neighbors, their houses, I look at sometimes neighbors that have some problems with weeds. I'm just thinking that by doing this, I hopefully we can have a little more transparency in government, find out where our money's going, how much we're paying on bonds, how much interest we're paying on bonds, how much fees we're paying on bonds, and try our very best. If we can't afford it, don't buy it. And if we can't afford it, and the citizens want to do something, then let them vote on it. I really think that's important, that the citizens, if there's gonna be a tax on them or a burden, that they should approve it. One thing that I really enjoy, I've had so much to enjoy, this has been the greatest fall to walk around the neighbors, the neighborhoods, go on the sunny side of the street, pour a cup of sweat, then head on the shady side, get able to cool down a little bit. But I said, I love living in American Fork, I love my neighbors, I've met so many good people as I've been out wandering the streets, and I really enjoy this. And I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your vote as well.
My name is Clark Taylor, and I really appreciate the crowd here tonight. I've done a few of these, and it's great to see so many people here. I am, I'm a hometown boy. I grew up in American Fork and spent most of my life here, with the exception of about seven years. And I love my hometown. I came from two very hardworking parents, worked my whole life, and took care of us. We had absolutely everything we need and absolutely nothing that we didn't need. And my father was the public courts administrator and the city recorder for the city of American Fork for 30 years. And he was a bit of American Fork bigot. We didn't shop outside of American Fork because it was important to keep your tax dollars in the city that you lived in. And so I just grew up with this deep love for this city, and it was instilled in me. I remember walking to my dad's office down on 200 North one day, and he had cut out an article from the Daily Herald, and it was an article by a gentleman, I don't know the article, but his name was Dunn, that's all I remember. And he had it pinned in back of his IBM typewriter, and it was called, "It Isn't Your Town, It's You." As a little kid, probably 10, 14 years old, I remember looking at that and asking my dad about it, and he says, "The city's your responsibility, Clark. This is where you come and get involved, and this is where you make the biggest difference." And I won't remember it perfectly, but I would like to tell you, you know, "It isn't your town, it's you. If you'd like to live in a kind of a town, that's kind of a town you like, you needn't put your clothes in a grip and go on a long, long hike, for you'll elsewhere find what you left behind. There's nothing that's really new. It's a knock at yourself if you knock your town, because it isn't your town, it's you." That's just one part of that. And so you know what, I'm just much better at putting up than shutting up. And so I get in and I get involved. I was heavily involved in helping the Art Die Park happen with shoulder to shoulder with some wonderful council people, who worked even harder at it than I did. American Fork has so many good things, and I just appreciate the opportunity to serve.
Thank you all. Just a reminder, a little etiquette, please keep the mic somewhat close to your mouth so that everyone can hear you. I had a few people motion to me that they want you to talk into the mic. Okay, my name is Josh Walker, like Christina said, we're the co-presidents of the Chamber of Commerce here. We have this neutral stance, the chamber does not have a policy on politics. We remain neutral so that we can do events like this. All right, so our first question is going to go to Ernie, number one, in the, in round number two here. Okay, and we had several questions that were submitted about the fiber project, so we're gonna get right into it. The fiber project that American Fork is working on right now. And so, you know, lots of opinions that have been written down, we're not necessarily going to ask for everyone's opinion on this, we're just, from the audience, we're gonna ask your opinion. So what are your feelings on the city doing this fiber project? So Ernie, we're gonna start with you, you have a minute.
Thanks, Josh. Is that better? Can everybody hear me now? My wife's saying she's good at this, I'm not with a microphone. I support our fiber project, and I'll tell you why, really very simple for me. The city needs to, there's certain things that the city does, they supply our roads, they supply our sewer, they supply our water. And of those things, I think high-speed internet and broadband is going to be, if it's not today, is important. 10 years ago, I don't think I would have supported the fiber project, but we've really changed. COVID really made a difference in our world, and we, as a community, can't function without high-speed fiber. And the businesses that we need to come in to continue to grow, to be able to have a tax base, more tax base, they're gonna require high-speed fiber. They're gonna require the high-speed internet, and without it, we won't be able to continue to grow and get the right type of people and businesses in our community.
I need to bell, I promise.
Thank you. So I'm opposed to it, so tonight you have a choice. I'm opposed to, on three fronts. One is, I don't think this is proper role of government, and many of our cities in our state have done this. We did it 20, 25 years ago when I moved here. We lost money, sold it, so now we have Connect. Provo City did it, lost lots of money. They sold theirs for like a dollar to Google Fiber, multi-million dollar asset for a dollar. Utopia's about 10 cities, they've been doing this for 15-plus years, they've lost almost $300 million over that time span. So governments aren't doing very well in competing with private business, we got lots of options. We do have fiber lines that are already running through our cities, and I think the citizens, when we're ready to pay for those, they hook to our house. Comcast, entry link, those guys will bring it to our, to our house. But I'm not on a lot of doors, and a lot of people don't even use landline service. They use Verizon, T-Mobile, and things like that.
Thank you. I'm also against fiber. I'd love everyone in the city to have fiber right at their fingertips, but I just don't think it's the role of government to provide it. I was involved, I know we paid quite a bit of money on the AF Connect project to get rid of that program, millions of dollars, and I just think that there are private businesses that can do that. I don't want to see our streets torn up again by cutting into them again with more fiber cables. Again, I don't think fiber is something that the city should provide. Private, if it's such a good deal, enterprise, I mean, Xfinity, Comcast would have put it in years ago if it was a great deal. So I just believe that it's not a function of government to provide internet services. The other thing that's really important about internet services is who knows when the next bump thing comes along, and technology changes so rapidly that who knows what we'll be using five years from now. And then we have this huge infrastructure, and we don't need to use it anymore because we're going off satellites or some other way to get it. I just think it's not a good investment for the city to put in fiber. It's not something for private businesses to do.
Folks, is it better if I stand up or if I cave, if I sit down? Standing up's better? The reason that I am for fiber, and I stand behind that 100%, the reason that it's not quite as cut and dried as it seems with some of the answers is that many of the people in the city can't get reliable high-speed internet, because the Xminities and Comcast won't run it down to the end of their neighborhood. They'll go where it's profitable and they're back, they'll back off. American Fork City owns a tremendous asset in fiber from Spanish Fork to Saint, to Spanish Fork, and Salt Lake to Spanish Fork, excuse me. It's a public-private partnership. The city owns that. We can help dictate the price and keep competitive prices. We can run it to people's houses if they want it, and if they don't want it, they don't have it, and they don't pay for it. That's the way it is currently set up. The take, the take rate is scheduled to be 39% will pay off the debt on that bond. The take rate will probably be much higher than that.
I'm also gonna stand up, I don't like to sit down for too long, I might pass out or something like that. So I think that is also something that we need to consider, is where does the city want to be now, but also down the road like five or 10 years? We're not just looking at the city now. And that's why with the fiber internet, we need to come up with a solution that will meet the residents' needs, that will meet the businesses' needs, not in 2023, but in 2030, as data only increases. I work in the IT industry, I also work from home, my wife has gone to school from home, I have a business down in Provo that requires fiber internet. And I've talked to lots of people who also say that they want to move someplace where fiber internet is available, type of businesses, and they say, hey, we need fiber internet. So we need to look at that. And also, as far as the cost, and I hate to admit to this, but there are some things that the city doesn't do to make a profit. There are some things that the city does that benefit the residents overall, things like the rec center, things like the road. They don't make money, that's not the role of government is to make money. So that's something to think about when we are planning a project, and just along with that, I just think we need to be looking forward to some future.
I'd like a rebuttal.
Okay, so Cameron liked a rebuttal. So how that works is, we're gonna give 30 seconds to each candidate to address the issue further. So Rachel, as soon as you're ready. Ken, we're gonna start with you, because you're first anyway. We'll give everybody a chance.
You know, it's critical of the take rate, right? I've backed on some-
What's the take rate?
Take rate is people who are signing up to use the service, and if they don't hit their take rate, then it loses money like AF did 20 years ago, Provo did, and or more is funneling out three-plus million dollars a year every single year. Doesn't go to roads, doesn't go to any rec centers, doesn't go to anything else, it goes to pay the debt off on their fiber project with Utopia, because they're not making money.
Anyone else?
Let's, let's be perfectly clear, folks, this is not Utopia. It's not even close to Utopia. The city owns the asset. We are bringing someone in to run and manage that. The city owns the asset, and will help dictate, dictate the pricing on that. This has nothing to do with Utopia or anything like that.
I did write down my thought, let me get it real quick. Oh yeah, so the take rate, and that's also something to be considered too, is that the take rate determines who pays it back. Not everybody's gonna be involved with paying back the bond, and some that if the take rate hits its mark, then not everybody's gonna be back with a bond. And I think that is also something to be aware of, that there are gonna be multiple ISPs on the infrastructure. So if we like competition, if we don't want to be dependent on Xfinity, that this also provides a way for multiple ISPs to be catering to different residents.
How many of you went up American Fork Canyon, and now your phone works all the way up in American Fork Canyon? You want to know why? The single largest provider of the backbone, so the main transmission line for high-speed internet in the state of Utah is Utopia. When they put the road in 20 years ago, somebody had enough foresight to go ahead and put fiber in, and they're making money. They didn't have to pay for canyon issues, they trade bandwidth on their backbone to other companies to put that in. It didn't cost any citizens anything to put fiber up American Fork Canyon.
It's already cost the citizens, and it'll continue to cost citizens. The fiber's not, not something for the city to put in. There's private companies that do that, it's not the government's role to put in fiber. We put, bring in clean water, get rid of the dirty water, and you fix roads. That's all we should be doing, and that'll save taxes, it'll save interest, and it'll save fees, and it will be the kind of city we're supposed to be.
Okay, thank you, everyone. All right, on to the next question. We had several people submit questions about the rec center and use of our recreational facilities. And so, just kind of summing up all of these questions, what do you see, how can we improve the AF rec center to facilitate the growth that's coming to American Fork? And Ken, this is your round to start things off.
Well, on the rec center, you got the park tax out there, it pays for services like that. But where I stand, so you understand, right, my position is, on services like that, they should be totally standalone, paid for by those who use them. So that the widow, the grandma, the single moms who aren't using the rec center shouldn't be funneling their taxes into that. And so, I, we want to improve it, and we look at that, we look at the business model and say, hey, are we willing to pay more to upgrade it and do that? I'm willing to do that personally, but my, my fee has not increased for the rec center, I think since, about since I moved here. And I've told some of the councilmen over the years, you should be raising my fee on me using that service and not on someone that isn't using that, by pulling in taxes from, that they're paying. So I think if we want to do that on citizens, we should make sure that those who use it are paying for it.
I agree with Ken on that. Appreciate that, that's great. Gotta have a sense of humor in this business, gotta have a sense of humor all the time. Anyway, I agree with Ken. One thing I did vote for, I'm very anti-tax, but I did vote for the park tax when I was on the city council, because I thought, what a great way to improve our city by taxing everybody else in the county who comes here to buy stuff. I think it's a great idea. Generally, I don't like taxing, I don't like to raise taxes, I don't like, instead of government raises taxes, I don't like when they waste, waste tax money like crazy. But I agree with Ken, I think if you're gonna use the system, if you don't use the rec center, why should you pay for it? If you use it, great, pay for it, raise your rates, use the park tax where necessary to improve facilities. I was glad, so glad to see, in fact, I think somebody came back, I'd met him in my neighborhood, they were so excited that the Art Die project had finally been finished, it's been out there for so long, and he was so excited to come back after being out of the state for two years and say, oh my gosh, they finally finished it. So yes, I agree with that, I mean, with Ken, you should raise them, let people pay for their own fees.
So the rec center is tremendously popular, as probably many of you know, and we have gone through and looked at new plans to be able to upgrade and expand it. As we sent out our citizen surveys, three things come back almost at the top every time, roads, fiber, and the rec center. Being able to provide the facility, the growth that it needs. Now that the Art Die park is done, we have the opportunity to push north with the rec center, should we decide to expand and take over that last ballpark that is right there. So there is ground available if we decide to do that, we just haven't felt like the timing is right, but it is in the works, we are trying to plan ahead and look into that, and we're all eyes and ears trying to figure out the best way to have that be accomplished. But it is a tremendous ask, many people have wanted to be able to keep that up and see it expand, and so we're just doing the best we can to pay attention and plan ahead.
All right, thank you. So I heard a comment saying that all we do is roads and water. I just want to give a shout out to the police and the firefighters, you know, they're part of what the city does, just so we know. Along with that, we also have a rec center. Who has not used a rec center? I do not have a membership, but I know that my local church congregation has had things like swimming events there for young men and young women and things like that. So when we say only people who use the rec center, we all use the rec center, we all use things like the parks, we don't pay a fee to go use the parks, we don't pay a fee to go use the pickleball courts. Once again, we need to think about, at the local level, at the city level, what are we trying to do to provide a place for children to go to classes, or for people, the school district to have a swimming pool, things like that. So I understand that, and also, the city is not in the business of making money, we do not want, I'd be nice if the rec center made some money, but also, we need to understand that we want the city to not be operating a business and trying to make a profit, but more be providing a place for people to gather and have events. And just real quick, a thought that I had, and I shared online, is to have satellite rec centers maybe, to have different rec centers throughout the city. Are we ready?
Okay. I think the rec center, the library, or parks are quality of life issues. Okay, I do have a, I do have a membership to rec center, and we do use it, but I'm not against raising some rates for the rec center, but that said, this is quality of life, this is the kind of things that get people to come to our community. If they come and they want to live here, what do they want? They want parks, they want a library for their kids, they want a rec center so they can go enjoy it. Like Tim says, you don't have to have a membership to be able to use it and enjoy it. So I think it's a quality of life issue, and I support a rec center, I love the park tax. I hate taxes, but I'll say this, I love the park tax, because it gives us ability to do things. Art Die would have never been finished in my lifetime without park tax, it wouldn't have. Well, now, I've seen some of the plans for the rec center, we need to improve it, we need to update it, we need to make it more user-friendly, and those plans are in the works.
Great, thank you very much. On that, so it was mentioned that the three hottest topics in the city are the rec center, fiber, and roads. So, several questions on the roads. If you want to ask a question, please submit them over here. Okay, so a lot of people commented saying the roads in whatever part of their city are horrible, what are we gonna do, what's the plans to fix the roads? And what are your thoughts on putting money towards roads? So we're gonna start with Jeff, this is your round to start.
When I was running for city council before, we talked about, we defeated a road bond, and here's why we defeated it. Roads are roads. In Utah, I've been on roads in Orem, I've been in roads all, and roads are never gonna be great. With winter, the way that it tears roads apart, cutting into the roads, rares them out, we need to do the best we can and do it as we go along. We fix what we can afford, and if we can't afford it, we wait till the next year and fix it the next year. The tough part about roads is like I said, they're always going to be terrible. You want to spend a billion dollars, we could have great roads for about a year or two, and then they're going to start deteriorating. It's just the climate we live in. I've been on a lot of the roads and they're, they need some work. But like I said, these roads have been bad since I was a little boy. And they, I don't think they're going to get better in our lifetime unless we just pour billions of dollars in there. One thing I got to say though about Mayor Hatfield, I really appreciated working with Mayor Hatfield, is when he fixed a road, the first thing he did is said, Lord, tear up everything inside that road, all the pipes and everything else that they found, old wooden pipes and all kinds of stuff in there. That's a great idea. Get a terrible road, fix it for the beginning, and then start fresh, so.
We have budgeted this year $12 million for road reconstruction and oil overlays and everything that we can do to try and fix these roads. That tax increase that you all experienced, that eight dollars a month, 55% of that, excuse me, 46% of that went to roads. And so there is a tremendous amount of road work going on to try and do that. Jeff says it's right, roads are rough all over. We're doing the best we can to try and do that. And when we talk about replacing infrastructure, whenever we do a complete overhaul on a road, just like Jeff said, we replace the piping underneath for the sewer, the water, and to try and take care of those things and do the best that we can. We are dedicating more money to roads this year than we ever have, have. And we're, we're making, we're making good things happen. It's always an uphill battle, but we are doing our best to be able to do that and, and make that happen.
Thanks, Clark. Okay, so roads, um, yeah, roads are obviously an issue. There's something that we go around, talk to people, knock on doors. Pretty much everybody says, my road sucks. Actually, the only person that ever got angry at me slammed the door in my face because he said he lived there for 50 years and his road had never been touched. So I was very offended because, you know, I wasn't involved, I wasn't even alive then. But anyway, so with that, and when you think about maintaining them, that's one of the best things that we can do is by looking at the service life of these roads, make sure that we're maintaining them, not letting them get to such a bad place. I do not believe it's not a solvable problem, like somebody had just mentioned. It's definitely a solvable problem. I've been to places around the US and around the world that have extreme weather conditions and they do not have bad roads. So it's not something that is a foregone conclusion. But then along with that, as, as already been mentioned, is making sure that we're doing the roads along with water lines. Also, my road is being worked on right now, and they're also putting the fiber line infrastructure in there. So that's another thing that the city is being really proactive about, not just tearing the road, but looking for times when the water lines can be replaced and the fiber and then fix roads at the same time.
Ready? Okay, one of the challenges with roads is if we don't maintain them. Okay, the service life of a road, rather than be in 40 or 50 years, will drop to 20 years. So we can't push it off. If we continue to push off roads, what's going to happen is we're going to be driving under roads. So we need to continue that maintenance, and that's an ongoing issue. So roads, we voted down two more road bonds as a city while I've lived here. Have our roads gotten worse in 20 years? Yeah, they have. The sad part is now it's going to cost us double or triple to fix those roads based if we would have done that 20 years ago. So I don't believe in letting things go. I don't believe in kicking the can down the road. I believe in trying to look forward. Fiber is the same way. I'm looking forward for the next 20 years, and we need to address roads now, and I think we're doing it the right way.
I trust the citizens to decide what direction we want to go. Uh, road bonds should come to the citizens, should pass through an RDA. A fiber project, $40 million, should be voted on by the citizens because this budget appropriated $9 million towards fiber. Well, there's $9 million that we could have put towards votes. Uh, but we can't. Uh, you know, the promise is, the hope is, that the $40 million bond that has passed will replenish the $9 million. That's the promise from, from our city government. But, but there's no guarantee of that. Because there's some citizens, like myself and some of you here, go and run a petition to say, look, we want to vote on this $40 million bond. Well, now what happens to that project? If the citizens decide, we don't want to do the fiber project, now we've just hurt $6, $9 million. So I hate to be the finance guy here, but you start big projects, it impacts everything all the way down to some of the essentials.
I just wanted to add one more thing. I had, I had a nice-
Hold on.
Sorry. This isn't a rebuttal, this is not on a value. You need to rebut something, I can, I'm good at it. I had, I had someone speak to me at our last meeting and said, you know what? My road was just finished last year, but now they come in and they put a new oil seal over the top of it. Why are they wasting money on doing that? We have a, we have a road plan, as we come in and we resurface a road, the next year we put a seal over the top of it. That gives us 20 years of life on those roads. So we are really planning effectively to try and take care and procure the roads and, and fix the roads that we need to and have them last for, you know, last in the future.
I'm, I'm not going to rebuttal either. I, I think we're all going to agree with my comment here. One of the issues I find as I visit with people is I think, and I know they're trying. I know where the city's trying and tried, is to help the citizens understand how the decisions are made, to which roads are done, why we resurface them and all those things. I served on the transportation committee when I served in the legislature for six years. I understand all these concepts. I understand how the fiber got laid in to our roads. It's because they dig them up, they put it down. And that's how we should be putting in our utilities and fixing them.
Um, you're going to see an example of, of how we're doing it right because we got, uh, we're pushing 700 North through all the way to First East, so we're coming up the hill and won't be stuck there anymore. That's the good news. We are all going to have a roundabout there on First East and 700 North. And because of that project, and because we found out that UDOT, because First East is a state road, we found out that UDOT is doing a bunch of work in there replacing small ditches. We pushed the road, roundabout back, and we'll put the infrastructure and new pipes, do everything else. So when we do that, guess what? It'll be a new road, it'll be 20, 40 years, not 20.
One thing I have noticed, we, we sometimes forget, we have a lot of older people around this area, a lot of widows. Road bonds, again, we really need to take into consideration all of our citizens. Many of them don't have the kind of income. Some of us are doing okay, right? But some of them aren't. Going to raise taxes on it, it's going to be a, a real challenge. So my concern is like I said, if we're going to do a road bond, if we're going to do a bond, let the citizens vote on it. And vote for it, then we can pay the taxes on it. If we don't vote for it, then it's not something that's important enough to, to take care of.
I just want to say a real quick thing about debt. I'm also somebody who doesn't want to go to death for everything, but I also, in my job, have sold debt before I worked for my company's bank. And there is a time and place when we go into debt. There are reasons why we don't have, most of us have a mortgage, why we cover costs over time. And yes, there is a interest cost with it, but there's also this idea of the present value of money. Once again, I have understood some finance as well. And so there are reasons why you extend payments over time, even though there is a cost involved with that.
All right, thank you, everybody, for the roads and what you're doing for the roads. Um, I do want to encourage everyone, not just in the audience, but you know, anyone that's going to watch this on YouTube or whatever. But there is a lot of information available on the city website about what the city is doing. And so if you are unsure, if you have a complaint, please educate yourselves on what the city is doing, what their plans are, before ranting about what the city is or isn't doing because you may not know that they are doing something about it. So that's just a, a little side note to everybody. Please try to inform, educate yourselves as you look at how to improve the city. Okay, this is a philosophical question for you on, on city government, I suppose. So, uh, and it's kind of a two-part question. On which topic are you likely to never bend? Or on which topic would you bend if money were the determining factor? Okay, I'm going to read that one more time because you kind of have to think about that, right? So on which topic are you likely to never bend? Or on which topic would you bend if money were the determining factor? Okay, Clark, you're first.
Uh, I will never bend on public safety. Public safety is my number one priority as a city councilman. Ensuring that our fire and our policemen have the very best equipment that they, they need. Um, being able to address the concerns and the immediate emergency needs of everyone in our city in a timely manner. That's something that I will never bend on. Um, when you call 911 on that dreadful day, if it ever happens to you, you're going to want the very best, you're going to want them to be there right away. 55% of your tax increase went to public safety. So just, just bear that in mind. What would I bend on if it were money? Crazy question. I, um, I'm not much of a philosopher. You know, I, I would probably look into a more immediate help with, um, some trails, uh, the completion of Art Die and other areas. We still have places we can people love that park.
Okay, so real quick, the thing that I would bend on is debt. And if money was not an issue, we just had a bazillion dollars at a time, we would never have to go into debt. We could pay everything right now. So that'd be the thing that I would bend on is being against debt at that point. The thing that I won't ever bend on is like Clark said, is emergency personnel. I'm a Marine, I understand what is involved with being in dangerous situations and the sacrifices that go into being in that position. And so everything that we can do as a city to support EMT, firefighters, police officers, all the training that they need, all the support, all the events that we can put on, whether it's the police night out or the open house for the fire station, anything that we can do to show that we support them, that we want them here, that they're a necessary part of our community, is something that I would never, ever bend on. Because without that, we have places that we don't want to live for sure, and we have just not a city anymore at that point. So we need to put in all of our efforts, all the time consistently, to support the man and woman in blue and red and white and everything else.
Sorry, broken record, you're going to hear the same thing. Um, public safety is something I would never bend on, but I want to add something to that. Um, our public works department is right behind that. Um, my daughter called me yesterday or Saturday morning and said, Daddy, I don't have any water. Why? And I said, open your window, look outside. And she goes, there's big white trucks out there. I said, you got a water leak. So Saturday morning at seven o'clock, guess what? American Fort Public Works guys were out there fixing a water leak. They're right behind our public safety. I wouldn't bend on them because a big, if that section of the town got shut off water for several hours while they fixed the leak, that's as necessary as public safety. Behind it, but right behind it. What I would bend on would be debt at the appropriate time. Um, bonding can be used, I'm pretty frugal, I'm a Thai bond actually. But bonding, like Tim said, you need to pay for your house, very few of us can pay cash. So I would bend on making sure that we bond and spend our money at the right time when we borrow money.
Um, I think police and fire, that's a given. I've been watching the 911, 911 series on National Geographic. You see the sacrifices that these men and women make. I think that's a given. Uh, what would I bend on? Obviously fiber, but hey, that's a given already, so we're talking about that. Transparency. Um, as a legislator, I ran a bill to require all local entities in the state to report their finances to the state. I had Washington County School District give me a $2 million fiscal note to try to kill my bill. Me and Senator Neiderhauser got together, and now every end, government entity in the state has to report their finances to a state website and to a database. And I helped design that database because I got in a fight with the state over how they wanted to do it, which was less transparent. Um, so transparency. Big issues, big projects, should all go to the people regardless of what the law may say.
You're surprised. Fire and safety are really important. Yeah, what I would bend on is the, uh, park tax. I was, like I said, I'm not a big taxer, but I thought if I could get all the lone people and the Spanish Fork people, the Doug, everybody, Charlotte Doug Smith, that they can pay for our parks and recreation and have great, great facilities that people from all over the county will come and use and spend their money while they're in American Fort, that I'll bend on. But I, again, safety is pretty obvious. Our policemen and firemen are very important, and we need to support them. Uh, they, they do a lot of good things, and we need to support them. And that means sometimes intervening with some of our neighbors and helping them understand how important the police are and how important it is to follow the law, that we don't have to worry about those kind of problems.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, the next question, um, we're going to talk about kind of responsibilities for city council. So there's been a few questions asked, uh, and how many city council meetings have you attended in person in 2023? And you understand the time commitment that is involved with being on the city council? So some people put in a lot of time, some people put in a little, little bit of time. So what is your thought process, what is your commitment to the citizens on how much time are you going to put into this? And how much time have you put in to educate yourselves on what's happening in the city? Tim, you get to be first.
Thank you. So my time commitment is whatever it takes. I haven't had a job where I clock in and clock out, probably for 20 years or so. My business, I go in there all hours. My job is the same thing. In the Marines, when I was in Afghanistan, I was working any plus hours a week. So the time commitment isn't just clock in, clock out, it's getting the job done, taking care of the residents, taking care of the projects that we're working on. As far as attendance, uh, I've been to every single city council meeting, every workshop, all the other events that are going on. And not just this year, but over the past couple of years. Trying to get myself educated, trying to get myself involved, talking to people before and after these meetings, outside of these meetings, so that I understand what's going in our city. And that wasn't just because I thought I was going to run for city council, it was because I wanted to be involved and know what's going on as a resident. And so the things like the Truth in Taxation Town Hall, the Budget Open Houses, all of these things are things that I encourage people to attend, and that I personally attend so that I can be educated and know what's going on.
I'm like Tim, I've, uh, since I decided to run, I've missed one city council meeting and one work session. I'm always there. Um, part of going to that, that's, that's actually the short part. Um, if you look at the packets, they send us out a link and we get to download the packets. A good night is 100 pages, a rough night is 300 pages. And we get it three or four days before, and we need to sit down and go through all 300 pages. Um, I like that the time commitment is whatever it takes. I, uh, I ran the flood control this year for the American Fort River from Utah Lake all the way up into the mountains. And I don't know how, I would come home every two days to shower, so I can't tell you how many hours I put in, but whatever it took. Um, I'm told that it's about 20 hours a week. I think that's a minimum if you're going to be effective. You can do less if you want, but those packets are intense and you need to be ready and, and educated on the things that come before us at city council. So it'll take a lot of time. Oh, and by the way, I had 10 seconds, right? I, I was an American Fort marching band band member for 16 years. So, um, I give that up, my kids are out of school, so now I have time.
No, I was not in AF band, not very musically inclined. Um, but I did grow up on the farm. Um, I know how to work. I have met an individual outworks me other than maybe my dad. Uh, I served in the legislature for six years. Uh, there were times I'd take a half day off from work, drive 30 minutes out to Eagle Mountain almost, and spend two or three hours with a citizen that wanted to meet with me. It was a year-round job serving in the legislature, it was not a part-time legislature. Um, I've been involved in the city council on and off with big issues, which unfortunately, Clark, was as I didn't show up, right? Uh, and, and on big issues, and then following it, following the agenda pretty much almost every week. Uh, so that's, I've been in and out over the past few years. And so I've been involved, obviously I understand the work because I did it for six years, and I'm prepared to do it again. My wife might not like that, though.
I just have to say with my experience in the city council and the city council we have now, none of them were slackers. They, they worked hard. I, I said, Clark, uh, everybody that worked in the city council, whenever I've been involved with them, they're all hard workers. There's not one of them that's lazy, that doesn't do their job, that doesn't attend the meetings. When I was there, I think I missed one meeting the whole four years I was there. And that was because I was out of town. I tried to do a phone conference, but my software issues I have with my self-pitying on computer stuff. But anyway, you know, I, I think the city council works tremendously hard. And I've got the time to put into it, and I just, I did it before, I'd be happy to put all the time I need to put into it. But yeah, I, I have full confidence in the city council. I've never, like I said, I've never seen one of them that hasn't worked very, very hard. And I, yeah, I appreciate all the hard work, all of them have done.
I personally just want to go on record and say I appreciate Tim showering. I was around him a couple of times during the flooding and one- Ernie, sorry, Ernie. Tim, I appreciate you showering as well. That's a great sheen you got going on the knock in there too, brother, great work. I've been on the city council for the past four years. Um, I'm, I'm there because I love my hometown. I, I got an email not long ago that called me a fat desk jockey and maybe I'd get out behind my desk, have some caveman pride and figure out what's going on. You know, I work a full-time job. I take time off to come to work sessions, which start at four o'clock. Um, but it's okay, I'm here for it. I love American Fort, and if things are going to change, it isn't your town, it's you, right? So I have dug in, I think my track record speaks for itself. Um, I love what I'm doing, I love being involved and making things happen, but, um, it's a, it's a commitment, but it's a- but it's a labor of love. So I'm all in.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Okay, next subject. We want to talk about downtown specifically. And so please give us your thoughts on revitalizing the downtown area. How do you think we can bring it back to life? And so I believe we're on Ernie to start this one.
This is a fun one, because when I first started dating my wife, 35, 38 years ago, she was staying with her grandparents in the home we owned here in American Fork. And I don't think downtown has changed a whole lot along Main Street. It looks about the same as it did almost 40 years ago. We need to revitalize our downtown. I think a really key part of that is Harrington Center. I know that everybody's been working hard. This could be the jewel of our community. We support the arts. We're known as a community of arts. Our park tax goes to the parks and the arts, and I support that fully. And I think the Harrington Center could be the thing that could allow us to jumpstart our downtown. And we get a, we get a center there that has a little theater that could seat almost 300 people and have art classes. I think this would be the thing that we could then build our downtown around.
I think with the downtown, you look to see what Lehigh did. Totally messed up traffic, right? I represented that area as state representative. So you gotta be careful. I'm gonna stand here. I'll lose a lot of your votes here, but the businessmen that are involved in there, that are down there, they should decide what they want to do and be able to commit their funds if that's, if that's what they'd like to do. There may be some auxiliary things on the side, as Ernie mentioned, that maybe happen. I don't know if that's a full revitalization of downtown. But if we go and do what Lehigh did, we will destroy the transportation. So we can't go just put flower pots in the middle of the road and then come back and start complaining about transportation and all the through traffic, because we're the crossroads of Northern Utah County. And we had some opportunities to do some other things with some other roads. John Dougal suggested, and City ignored those, and so we have what we've got now.
I kind of agree with Ken. I don't know if you've ever noticed when there's an accident on the freeway, that this now becomes the freeway. And it's, I don't know how, again, we don't want to shrink it, but I'm not sure how we can get, maybe get another east-west road through here somewhere to get the traffic that just wants to go through. And then maybe you could have a nicer downtown, that's a little slower pace, like Provo where you have a, you know, little slower speeds and all that. But I'm not sure we can do that until we get the east-west traffic issues resolved. Because like I said, there's an accident either side of the freeway, State Street becomes, makes, becomes the freeway. And it's, I don't know if you've ever been on there, waiting after light. Yeah, it's, we can't shrink it yet, until we get some other east-west traffic going. And then maybe we can make it a little bit smaller, slow down the speeds, and make it a place that people will love to come and shop and to walk around the stores. But for right now, I just don't think that's possible.
So we're in a unique circumstance with our Main Street. American Fork City does not own that. That is state-owned. And so the road, the traffic that goes down there is going to be that. We're not going to be able to put islands in the middle of that unless we completely revamp all of Main Street. So we're a little bit hampered on what we can do. However, you know, there are plans for the south corridor, down south of I-15, that will alleviate some of the traffic that Jeff's talking about, the Vineyard Connector. UTA and the team is taking a long time to plan for that. North, we've had Canal Boulevard now that goes between caveman, excuse me, not caveman boulevard, but up towards Lone Peak, and then our first east extended. We're trying to do things that way. I think the Harrington Center would do much to bring more traffic to downtown. The arts are critical, and the Harrington Center has a perfect opportunity to be able to do that. There's a revitalization zone that's down here that we can take advantage with that. And so we're working currently. The city is working with them to be able to help facilitate that. But there's just so much we can do with the state road as our Main Street.
Okay, so a lot of this has already been said, but yes, this is kind of like the big idea and big project that we need to be focused on. It's something that hasn't had a lot of updates over the past years, but what are we gonna do going forward? And there are a few things, as was already mentioned, that is a state road. So we need to be creative with coming up with ideas of how can we adjust either the Main Street, and so we could look at maybe Pacific Drive, making that the Main Street, putting stuff along there, or changing it to be a north-south road. There are lots of ideas that we can do. But where it is right now, before we adjust the road maybe, is how do we incentivize businesses to get there? How do we incentivize people to be able to park down there, and also how to safely cross the road to go to different businesses? Because that's something that makes me not want to go down there very much, is when I have to cross that road, it's like playing Bragg to get across Main Street. And you don't want to get, have that as an issue. And so just coming up with a big idea, and it's already been mentioned, is the Harrington Center has an amazing plan for what they want to do with their school, and what they want to add on to that. And so making that a focal point for events and what we can do in revitalizing it is critical.
All right. Thank you very much. So, next question's a little, well, you know, every topic is a little sensitive, but this one, a lot of people asked about property tax increase that recently came. And so several people said, you know, I'm on a fixed income, or, you know, how do you justify a 37% to 40% tax increase to residents? Let's see here. Why have we seen such a large city property tax increase? What do we get for that? And do you support that increase? Okay? So think along those lines. Ken, you're first this time.
I think everyone knows my position on this. Fiber impacts is my evidence to that 40% wasn't needed at that point. Because we spent, we appropriated $9 million for fiber. You don't appropriate the $9 million, you don't have to raise our property taxes 40%. And I don't know that it's any more complicated than that. We should have taken the fiber project to go to the citizens, and then bonded for the full amount, and then gone to work on that project. Instead, we snuck $9 million through the budget and through the contract, wasn't even on the agenda. Sorry, that's my mom calling me. She doesn't know where I am.
I just texted her and told her, and she didn't keep following.
Yeah, so, anyway, I've said what the issue is, is we don't spend the $9 million. We might have to raise 40% at this point. Maybe there's a point in the future you need to, but certainly wasn't last year.
I agree as well. We, profit tax, with what the federal government is doing to us, and with all the tax increases and the inflation that's out of control, all this nonsense, when the federal government's out of control, it's time for the city government to back down on taxes. Instead of raising taxes, we should be trying to look for ways to reduce them. And sometimes, I know this is hard to do, but sometimes you may have to cut city employees. I know that's a hard subject for people who, but remember, city people work for us. You do not work for the government. The government is supposed to work for you. So if the taxes are going high, the governments, the federal government's high, we need to be very, very careful whenever we raise taxes on our citizens. Because again, we're working for them. You guys are not working for us. We work for you. The federal government's forgotten that tremendously. They think that we're here just to meet their needs, and it's not how it should be. And so I'm against a property tax increase. Fiber, with all those things in there, there's just too many people that are struggling. And I see it when I walk around. We need to not raise people's taxes in a terrible economic time.
Raising taxes is tough. And originally, it was going to be, as we, as we looked at this, first off, let me say there hasn't been a tax increase in American Fork property tax increase since 2008. So when it came to this, and trust us, it was a fight inside the city council. Originally, it was going to be $10 for every resident with a $400,000 home, or around that range. We went into Truth and Taxation, where it was an open forum for people to come and talk. They came and talked. Everything's been very transparent, including fiber. But they were able to come and talk. And several old people, in fact, one gentleman that I remember in particular says, You are taking my ice cream money. And he's right. I had a mother on a fixed income as well. I'm very aware, I'm very sensitive. And whatever you all are taxed, I am taxed as well as the city councilman. We went ahead and we knocked the rate down even further, so that it came out to about $8.99.
As I mentioned, where I attended a lot of the events over the past couple of years, I attended the Truth and Taxation open house or town hall last year, and I spoke. And so some of you may even remember that I came up there and spoke. And I even talked before that meeting with some people on the city council about some of my concerns. But we also need to understand that, as Clark mentioned, it hadn't been raised in, I mean, now 14 years, I guess, from last year. And it's a very cumbersome process to raise taxes. This Truth and Taxation process is very cumbersome, and so it's not something that's very easy, which is a good thing, because we don't want taxes to just be raised willy-nilly. But as also has been mentioned earlier, is that this is helping to fund roads, this is helping to fund emergency personnel. And I think it's also important to understand that there are different buckets of where funding comes from. And so you can't just say, oh, money was spent here, and so if we hadn't spent that, then we would spend someplace else. That is something that's very important, and something that I've wondered the past couple of years, dealing with these, looking at the budget and talking to people, that you can't just pick and choose where money, it's not just this big pot that goes with. There are certain things that go through roads, some things that go to parks, sewage, et cetera.
The Utah Truth and Taxation law is, got some really good things and some really bad things. The good thing is, it makes it totally transparent. Like Tim says, you go to, you go to the meetings, you go to, and you get the feedback, and our city council listened, and they dropped that. Okay? The bad news is, the way Truth and Taxation works is, we were held at that 2008 level. Okay? What that means is, every year, our mill levy dropped a little bit by law, so that we had that, we didn't get a tax increase. We didn't get, we kept that money at that 2008 level. So 2022, we were living on 2008 taxes. And I don't know about you, but my costs have went up. And are you willing to, 55% of that went to public safety. 45% of that tax increase went to roads. If you want me to say I will never raise taxes, I won't do that. I won't raise my hand. But I will raise my hand and say it will be totally transparent, and I will listen, because 14 years was too long. We kicked the can down the road, and we made it really painful, and we shouldn't do that.
All right, go.
Hold on a second.
Give her a second.
I just, I want to help everyone understand, this is not a 30-second answer, but I'm happy to stay after and tell you all about this. Utah's certified tax rate is different than other states. We don't fluctuate. When that certified tax rate is there, when inflation goes up or down, same amount of money since 2008 is distributed year after year after year. Other states, that goes up or that goes down depending. Our certified tax rate remained the same. So when we say we were paying 2023 bills on $2,008, that was exactly correct.
So Truth and Taxation is a awesome law. One of the reasons it is, because at local government, there's no separation of powers. We've all been through school, we've studied the Constitution. State level, federal level, there are separations of powers. There is none. The only constraint on local government is a few state laws that say, hey, we're not gonna let your taxes automatically double when your house goes up double. We're not gonna let you do that. We're gonna let you be leaders and come out and say, okay, we need to make taxes.
If you look on your city bill, there's a $6.50 charge for water. I did that about, about almost 20 years ago, as president of American Fork Bottom Water District. And I had a choice. We had the Burnout Canal go in, and our costs went up incrementally. I mean, it was horrible for water. So one of the things that we did is, I sat and agonized due I'd become a taxing entity. We're appointed, we're not elected, but I could become taxing entity. And my decision was, and our board decision was, was to go with city council and go with a fee that was transparent to everybody. And it was cheaper.
I just want a quick response to something that was said, too, where because the federal government raised taxes, or because the state government, or anything, I don't think that's fair for the city to have to respond because the federal government can't control their spending. Yeah, we all get it. They don't know how to spend, they don't know how to run the government, to be completely honest. But because they can't spend money properly, doesn't mean it needs to negatively impact us, so we never raise taxes. Because the federal government is gonna raise taxes until we're all broke.
We're broke.
All right. Thank you. Okay, next subject. We're gonna talk about housing, which, you know, a lot of studies been done by the Kemse Gardner Institute about the growth that is coming, especially to Utah County. And so some people are saying, you know, they don't like the dense housing along the Mid East, or they don't like how much housing's coming in on the south side of the city. But what are your thoughts on ordinances that come in? You know, somebody specifically asked about families turning their homes into rental units. So housing in particular, it's a, it's a big issue, especially affordable housing. What are your thoughts on housing as we continue to address the growing, growth, the coming growth of the Utah County? And I believe Jeff, you're first this time.
First of all, I love people, and I love them coming here. I love the growth. I love to see the development. I do not want to see a single-family resident zone in what American Fork changed to anything other than single-family residency, because you need both. We have kids, we have grandchildren. They need places to live, and they're not gonna start off in a million-dollar home. They're gonna have to start off renting somewhere. And at American Fork, I want people to come here. They're gonna come here whether we want them to come or not, and I say we welcome them. And just be very careful about keeping single-family residences, keep them where they are. We can't afford to allow one single-family resident zone in American Fork to turn into anything else, commercial, multi-family housing, anything else. Because it's good to have families here, too, right? We've raised our families here. I love American Fork. It's a great place to raise a family. And everybody else sees this and says, you know what? I want to go raise my family there, too. I'm tired of all the other stuff. I want to raise my family. So I say we welcome people, and we just be very careful that we don't change zoning that protects our single-family homes.
Heard a ton about this, and everyone's right on. I have the same concerns about the massive amounts of traffic and everything else. But 2022, House Bill 462 dictates that any city that has a transit, a station in their city is required to have high-density housing around that. So south of I-15, by the front-runner station, you'll see that we have high-density walkable housing that radiates out towards the lake to single-family homes. All of our high-density housing is being planned and is planned properly. Along 500 East, you see all of those, those high-density housing coming in. That's so they have quick access to the corridors that will take them to the freeway. The high-density housing by the transit station, that's so people have quick access to the train to be able to do that. We have tried to keep the high-density housing to our general plan to those areas so that we could manage it, so that we could stay on top of it, and so that those larger roads could be able to take advantage of that, pulling people out of town, onto the freeway, or wherever they need to go. So that is the plan that we're currently working with.
So housing is an issue, and it's not just in American Fork, not just in Utah County, it's not even just in Utah. This is a problem really around the US, where people are moving to certain areas, and it's driving up the prices of houses. And then we also have this macroeconomic issue of significantly higher interest rate. So the only lever the city can pull is housing and increasing the supply. And one of the ways that they've been doing that is by having this high-density housing, the affordable housing, and as Clark just mentioned, spreading it out from certain districts. One of the things that the city is doing better about as well is making sure that it's mixed-use residential, and so putting shops, or incentivizing shops and restaurants to be co-located with these high-density housing, so that people do not have to drive to get to certain places, to get to shopping or to get to eating. And then along with this, around the housing, is just making sure that there are pedestrian paths, making sure that there are bike paths. So once again, we don't all have to have cars for everybody that moves into these areas. So, and as far as the short-term rental, I know that was already mentioned, but short-term rentals is a really tough issue, and I'll talk about that later.
You know, demographically, we're changing. Our kids and our grandkids are changing, our granddaughter's only four, so, but still. Demographically, things are changing. And I've got two of my three kids that really don't want a single-family home. They don't want a mother-in-law. They don't want to take care of the house. They don't want to take care of the siding. They don't want to wash the windows. They're gonna live in town homes, because that's what they want to do. And so we need to be ready for them. Like Clark said, our transit-oriented development down there, it's going to have a key component that will be a large grocery store, something like that, that it will be built around, so that they have the stuff that they can come off of tracks, they can get their food, they can have restaurants, they can have everything, and then walk to their town homes or apartments, whatever. The city's got a great master plan. It's really important that we go ahead and follow that master plan. And the city council's done a good job, because we got a lot of people coming in, the developer bodies, property, and a lot of change zoning. And the city council's held the line and said, no, if it's commercial here, it's commercial. You don't get residential mixed in.
Well, I'm 60. I live in California. And you know what? It's amazing. I live in North Carolina. People just come. Because we all have kids, and they just come. We don't need to entice them here. We don't need to kick them out. We need to let the market decide if we're gonna build high-density housing. Let the market decide that by a developer coming and saying, hey, I'd like to, I'd like to build this, rather than governments getting involved, like the state.
build this, rather than governments getting involved, like the state government being involved, or the federal government being involved, forcing, saying, hey, you've got to do this. And then, of course, what they do is they throw in a few dollars and then tell you what to do with the rest of the money, right? That's kind of how our education system works. And so, just let the market work, be cognizant of, of our family homes. But if a developer wants to come in and says, hey, I want to build this high-density, say, okay, it fits where it's at. But if government's driving that, that is the wrong person to drive that.
Just real quick, we've got, okay.
Give her a second.
Go, you give more time, Jeff, go.
Okay, thank you. Just real quick, I'm sad that our young people have lost their dream, the American dream, to have your own place, your backyard, your place to sit out there and eat your rad strawberries, like I did Saturday, or go eat my raspberries, or sit on the lawn and pull weeds out of my, that front patch that the city owns, but we take care of, those dumb weeds. There's weeds in Utah, and they, oh, they're pests. But anyway, I'm just sad that we're losing that dream, to have your own place to live and your own place to have your family. Anyway, we need to get back to that dream, it's possible in this great country.
Anybody else? Tim, did you want to continue your thought?
I will. Well, I'm not going to continue that thought, that's a longer thought. But just what I'll say is that something that Mayor Ross said a couple of months ago has really stuck out to me, and that he's like, what he says is that we're building a city, the city council is building a city. And he was telling that to a developer, and I just thought about that a lot, how we are looking at it holistically, how residential, commercial, how shops, big and large, how schools, all fit into our community. And so it's not just residential or housing, just the big picture.
Few years ago, two-thirds of our growth in the state of Utah was our kids. That's changed a little bit. It's now fifty-five percent is from people that are raised here that don't want to leave. Forty-five percent of people coming in. Why are they coming in? Because we're a desirable place to live. The downside is, it's bringing the cost of housing up. We need to have that more reasonably-costed housing, and unfortunately, that's going to be apartments, townhomes, condominiums. It's not going to be those family homes. I think they both have a place in American Fork. We just need to keep it American Fork.
I am loving the microphone tonight. I, I think it's important to note that as a city councilman, you're called upon to plan. So just for everybody's information, Front Runner was put on American Fork. It was brought when that land was in the county, and American Fork was forced to deal with it. So we plan and we do everything else. That's why that 200 South is so critical for us to be able to rebuild that, because of the infrastructure that's coming in there. People want to sell their property, and they should be able to. But American Fork City has to plan. Front Runner was dropped on us, we had to work around it.
All right, we have time for two more questions, so we're going to go back into philosophizing once more. Okay? So what do you, each individually, what do you look for when you're voting for elected officials? So you're all, you all have your own vote, what do you look for when you're voting for elected officials? And I believe it's Clark's turn.
You know, folks, the, the things that take place on our city government are more critical than anyplace else. You know, we talked about our state looking out for us. Our state doesn't look out for us. Okay? When you were on, in, in the city government, you need people you can lock arms with and you can work together with. You don't have to agree with everyone all the time, but you have to be able to work. We have had a tremendous city council in the last few years, because we work together, we work hard, we listen to people's viewpoints, and it goes in perpetuity like that. We need people that can work, can be civil, can disagree, can come together and agree, can work together and make things happen. This, this election is about far more than one issue. As a city councilman, you've got to view this big, not this big. And that's what we need. We need foresight, open minds, and be able to work together.
So I mean, I talked about it a little bit in my introduction, but, and the main thing is always going to be solid principles and honesty. If you have no character, then I don't want you in politics at any level, but especially at our local level. So that's really going to be the first thing. And this knowledge of the issues, are you attending the city council meetings? Are you getting involved? Are you talking to experts? Are you learning about what's going on, and looking at it from different perspectives as well? The ability to work together, what Clark had just mentioned. If you can't work together, if you're going to be so focused on your own standing and just say, I'm going to stick here no matter what, around something that's not like a critical issue, and you won't work together, you won't compromise, then you just become a roadblock, a stumbling block to the city's progress. And then kind of along with that is being able to creatively problem solve. So looking at the different issues, being able to look from different perspectives, thinking outside the box, to be able to solve problems, and that's going to be a critical issue. And then just hard work, just being someone who can get stuck into it and get after it.
You know, when somebody asks you the question, I've got three answers. Okay? The answer is, I'll give you the answer, best of my knowledge. If I don't know, I'll say I don't know. And if I know and can't tell you, I won't lie to you and say, I don't know, I'll look you in the eye and say, I can't tell you. That's the kind of person I'm looking for. Someone can work together that's willing to listen, that I can listen to me, and I can listen to them. And there's going to be times when I'm going to come in with an idea that, after talking to people, I'm going to realize I didn't have all the information, I'm going to do a change. If you've got the basic principle, and you've got that honesty, then you can work with anyone. And I'm looking for someone who can work together and not vilify anybody. Like Clark says, there's, these packets are huge, you've got to know a lot about everything. And I don't know a lot about everything, but I guarantee that other group, we all get together, we work with our city staff, then we're going to be able to come up with the right answers. And we've got to plan ahead. We can't look at today, we can't look at tomorrow, we've got to look down the road. And that's what I'm looking for, someone that won't kick the can down the road, that'll take those hard issues by the horns and let's solve them.
First thing I look for, someone is, someone that values life. Because if a person doesn't value life, then there's nothing else that really matters. Now, I think all the gentlemen here, I think they value life and, and support that. Respect the constitution. Our founding fathers understood that governments easily can abuse their power and can grow and grow, they're, they're a self-feeding animal. And so there needs to be restraints on them. That's why we have separation of powers, that's why state legislature puts some boundaries around some of our local entities. Third, I want someone to think twice about spending a dollar, or taxing a dollar. Because that's how you limit government. I mean, Ronald Reagan says, the only way you DQs government is you have to take the revenue away from them. Because governments will spend every dollar that they can get to. And so I'm looking for someone that will think twice about it. Yes?
Look, again, I'm just looking for somebody who's, like I said, willing to work, willing to talk about issues, and also sticks to their principles. I'm also a strong believer in the constitution. It's a magnificent document, and we way undervalue what it, what it can do. A lot of people want to get rid of it, but it's, it's critical. Now, local government, we don't get involved particularly in constitutional issues, but I really struggle with the federal government giving you the money, and then coming after you like, well, you, here, you're going to do it our way, if you want the money. I'd prefer the federal government keep our money with us, and let us decide what to do with it. Because when they get a hold of it, it doesn't, very few things turn out well when the federal government gets a hold of the money. But I want people that are honest, when I was on the city council before, with, with one exception, I think we, we got along great. We worked hard, we didn't always agree on everything, but we worked hard. And, and again, I, as the current city council, I don't have any faults against their hard work and their efforts. We may disagree on taxing issues, but I, I, like I said, I think they're good people.
Thank you again. All right, this is our final question, and then we'll have our closing remarks. So we're going to talk about the future. All right? One person, I'm going to kind of read both a little bit, but, you know, what does it mean to you to invest in American Fork's future? And another person put some timelines on it. So they said, you know, that for the next five or ten years, I'm going to say specifically the next four years, because that's what your term is on the city council for the next four years. So what is your vision for American Fork? How do you see yourself investing in American Fork over the next four years and beyond? And I believe we're back to starting with Tim.
Thank you. I mean, I think this is kind of just the summary of what we've talked about so much over the past hour and a half or so, is for the next four years, what are we going to do around revitalizing the downtown American Fork? I would say that would be one of my big priorities, is what are we going to do to work with businesses, with the Harrington Center, with the city, with the state, whoever else, to get our downtown area getting revitalized, getting it someplace where people want to go, where people want to shop, where people want to set up businesses. So that would be my, my main focus, and where my vision is, is just updating the downtown area, and then looking at the growth as well. How are we managing the growth, making sure that we're implementing some of the things that have already been talked about with housing, and developing the bike pass, the pedestrian pass, all those things. So those would be my two main focuses, and where my vision realizes, revitalizing the downtown, and getting the growth to be where there are shops and there are restaurants around the high-density area.
One of the things I like about working with a group of people is, you've all got a little different point of views. And mine's been water. And I'm going to, I'm going to tell you right now, our wells that we pump to drink is going down about a foot a year. There's going to be a point where if we don't do something, our kids and grandkids won't have any drinking water, they won't have enough, and they'll be limited. So I was really key in getting money from the federal government, and it doesn't have strings, through the, through the county, to purchase some property, so we can do groundwater recharge. What that means is, we're going to be able to put water back in the ground, so that we're able to have clean drinking water for, not just American Fork, but for North Utah County. And I think one of the things I bring is that expertise, and every one of the council members have that little area of expertise. And if we come together as a group, we can make the best decisions for the city. And so for the next four years, I think fiber's key for that, but I think we need to keep working on our water infrastructure. Because if we don't, it won't affect us, but I guarantee it'll affect our kids.
You know, we, we moved here twenty-four years ago, and we can move, move anywhere, we're moving back from North Carolina, coming back home, for me, anyway. And we picked American Fork because it reminded us of those small, close towns that we lived in and saw in North Carolina. I, I don't think we have to overcomplicate this. I think, do most of us love living here? I think the answer is yes. I, I don't think we need to overcomplicate it with spending money on fiber projects and things like that, that, that are like, wow, cool, projects that really aren't going to change our, our city. People are going to come here regardless of what we have. I'll, I'll guarantee you, we could do nothing, and our city's going to fully build out in the next ten or fifteen years. We like our way of life, let's don't overcomplicate it.
She's a lot faster now. Kind of the future I'm looking for is, I'd like to see if this work more as a city. As I walked around the streets, I see a lot of weed patches and ugly parts of the city as I walked around, and I, I wonder if we don't, we can't get our churches more involved, and working with the city to try and help people who can't help themselves, just beautify their property a little bit, right? There's things that we can do, not pay city workers to do it, but get volunteers to do it. We have great volunteers in the city. It's a shame that we have so many volunteers, so many people are willing to help, but we can't get them tied up with the people who need the help. There's some older people, maybe they can't keep their yards up how they'd like, but like I said, luckily, winter comes and kills everything, so there's snow, and it's beautiful for five, six months of the year, and then the weeds grow. And I just think there's, as a city, I'd like to see us this next four years, really work on making this place not only a nice place to live, but a beautiful place to live, and without raising taxes, and just using our citizens here to see if we can't make all of us feel a lot more like we're a home when we're in this city.
As a city councilman, the, the priority is being able to manage our resources. When Ernie talks about water, you know, we, we rebuilt two wells, so that they're functioning, functioning properly. In 2015, we rebuilt the infrastructure from the Cave Camp well, so that we would have drinking water for the citizens of American Fork for another generation. We have to be able to look, to have the foresight to be able to look at those things and manage them. And from another standpoint is, and whether it's downtown or anyplace else, we have to build our commercial element. Because those tax dollars that come to American Fork benefit us in many ways. And, and those are the best kind of dollars, those keep property taxes down. And being able to have businesses that can thrive here in a sound, solid environment with a, with a strong community is what will, will keep that going. So being able to manage our resources and keep an eye, keep our eye on the future, and then be able to build our commercial base, so that we have more things happening there, be able to offset, offset our property taxes key.
Okay, so we're going to finish up here, Rachel's going to put ninety seconds on the clock, and everyone will be able to give their closing statements. And Rachel, just kind of give me the nod when you're ready. Look at that, she's ready to go. Ernie, you're going to start us off for this last round, and we'll end with Tim, so.
How come I got to start the first round too? I'm just lucky?
Yep.
Okay. I think there's some pretty apparent differences up here tonight. I'm like Clark, we didn't have to come home to American Fork. Yeah, we've got the family home, and Debbie's grandpa wanted us to buy it. But that isn't the reason we moved. We moved here because this is where we want to raise our family. And I recognize there's change, and we all fight change, and change is hard. And this city's going to continue to change, but I'd like to keep it American Fork. I'd like to keep the good things that we have here, the volunteers, our band, I love our band. I would like to keep the things that we grew up doing, okay, to stay here and have that opportunity for the next generation that's here. And it's going to take a lot of work. I can't do it by myself, none of us can. It's going to take a group of people, and we got a great city council right now. And I don't have these great big plans to change anything. What I would like to do is just continue on the work that they've done. I've been working behind the scenes now for twenty years, and I've been preparing for this for twenty years, but I didn't realize it, I didn't know it. I think J H knew it, and he's laughing at me right now, going, you should have been more aware of this. But we've got a great city, and I'd just like to continue to make it the place it is, and I think I can help. Thank you.
Well, as, as Ernie said, you've seen tonight, elections are about accountability and direction, right? And that's why we have, when I was on, when I started the state legislature, I told people, I said, look, someone needs to run against me every single time. Because we need to have this kind of discussion, this kind of debate, if we call it that. Because then better ideas come out of it, and, and as citizens, we, we got to trust citizens. If, if we can't trust the people with making decisions, then we're not America. That's what made America great, is we trust the individual. And so there are issues that we've talked about tonight, that citizens, they're not getting a choice to vote on these, on fiber, nope, no choice, thirty-million-dollar bond, nope, no choice. Let's trust the people. I think we, we live in a great place. I've lived coast to coast in this country. This is a great place. The past isn't so bad, and the future looks bright for us. Our, our, our kids love it, they love growing up here, we love being here. But we need to watch the finances. All levels of government are spending money like crazy. The reason they're leaving California is taxes.
Have to tell you a funny story. We lived in California for, before we came back to Utah, and when I was down there going to law school. And when we got back to American Fork, my kids went to Shelley Elementary, and my son came home, and the first thing he said, Dad, they have toilet paper in the bathrooms. Because in California, they didn't have doors in the bathrooms, and they didn't have toilet paper in the bathrooms. But we all know the challenge California has, is because they think the people are there to serve the government, not the government there to serve the people. American Fork's a great place, and, and we need to be fiscally responsible. We need to make sure that whenever we spend any money, if it's a large amount of money, the citizens ought to have their input. If it's a small amount of money, we need to really think about, not how does it impact us if we're doing okay, but how's it impact some of our citizens who may not have the ability or the money to do that? And, and then what kind of an impact that has on them, and just the fact that if they can buy groceries that week, or if they can get, pay their bills with the inflation, everything that's going on. So we need to be very fiscally responsible, and remember, it's not our money, it's your money.[1731.13] Uh, we're here to serve you, not you to serve us. And we need to get that re, put back into people's minds that government's here to serve us, not the other way around.
You know, this is, this is home for me. You've heard that, you've heard that from me before. I'm, I'm devoted, uh, my heart is here and I want to be able to make great things happen. I, I take issue with, with things like transparency and things slip through and, and, because it's just not true. And I will stand up and I will stand before any one of you, and I'll meet you back in the back corner and I'll tell you what's going on. I'll tell you about the 30 thou, 30-million-dollar road fund. I'll tell you how we came to $9 million for the fiber. This is a sound, solid council that's working to make great things happen. And for me personally, I've given a lot to this. I've, I've been in city council before, I've been in city, I'm in city council now, at least for the next couple of months. There are great things happening and good people working to solve problems. There isn't any secretive cloak-and-dagger things that's going on. That's just not the case. All of our meetings are noticed, all of our meetings are recorded, all of those things are available to anyone that wants to be able to hear that. We need to come together. We are a community. We will make things better. The city council won't. We will make things better. And it's when good people can come together, discuss issues, agree or not, or disagree, either one is fine, but we've got to come together to be able to do that. Standing back and throwing rocks doesn't help anyone. We come together, we talk, and we work through these things. I think I've got a solid track record of doing that. Talk to people who've worked with me, talk to people who dislike me, you'll find the same answer.
I just want to say thank you all for coming out. This is really important to all of us in the city, that the people, the residents are involved. And just something I've been thinking about is I hope that we all appreciate what a gift to even have an event like this is, to live in a place where we're safe, where we're secure, where we're prosperous, where we do work together and where we're free to be able to come and decide who is going to represent us in the city. Because especially over the past couple of weeks, you've probably seen stuff going on on the news, that is not the case for most people around the world. It is a gift that we can come here, we can talk, we can discuss issues, and we can choose who represents us in the city. And so that's what I would like for all of you to understand, is that there comes a huge responsibility with this. And so after tonight, I want you to all take this time to talk to your neighbors, talk to your friends, talk to your coworkers about what you heard, about what you liked, about what you didn't like, and say, this is why I would want this person on the city council, this is why I wouldn't want that person. Because we are looking at not just now American Fork in 2023, but American Fork 2027, American Fork 2030, because so many of the issues in our city come from decisions decades ago. And so who gets put onto the city council will not just affect, as I said, the next four years, but the next 10 and 20 years. I'm very optimistic. I know that we can solve problems, but I also know that doing it together is what makes that possible.